Is this a sink or swim meeting?
If we had a chance to look at the agenda. It's so, there are no changes, corrections, regulations. In motion to amend the agenda.
I like that motion that we amended to.
I'll say it's no problem. All in all. Larry, I've got you on the agenda but way down at the bottom. While you're here, I'm gonna skip down and just let the council know what we're doing a little bit.
Okay.
Because I'll talk to, the attorney did not come tonight, but I made a range, he'll call me and I'll talk to him in the morning on the phone.
Very good.
So, I'm gonna skip down. The very last thing on here that I've written in is airport. And I'll tell you what the issue was there. The very last, it's at the very last hangar down there. It's old and dilapidated and it's one of those that had a lifetime lease and we found a copy of the lease whether or not. And that lease gives them the right to use the building forever almost, all the way down through as long as it's a family member. And they first, they first wanted to build a hangar up above Bill Nelson's because FAA and Mo Dowd are real picky about what you do out there with the building. This is Larry Johnson.
Right. And Sue.
You were a nurse.
Sue Longy.
They signed in.
I just put Sue on there.
Yeah. So, it's gonna be kind of an ordeal to build a hangar and have access to it and all that sort of stuff. So, they've made arrangements to buy the hangar, that old hangar down there, and then he wants to build onto it. And so, we just kinda visited and I said, "Well, as far as we were concerned, as far as him buying the hangar, all we need is a bill of sale just to kinda see that he's bought it." Then he's gonna have, he'll have a diagram for us showing us exactly the size of the building, where it's gonna be located, the other building, the square footage and all of that kinda stuff. And he's still got lots of work to do there on that. And he rehabbed the old one. And then I was gonna talk to Larry tonight, but I talked to him on the phone, Larry's not coming. Didn't feel good. And we're talking about probably a 30-year lease with renewable 30 years and with a stipulation that we had first right to purchase, they decided to sell it. And there may be some other things in there besides that. We're gonna wanna know the square footage of it and some of those kinds of things in the lease. And Larry will have to help us get all that stuff in the lease so that we've covered everything. So, anyway, that's where we are with it. And I haven't talked to Larry and they came tonight and I told them Larry was gonna be here. So, I went ahead and that's why I went ahead and did it now. You can do, welcome to stay for the meeting.
True, okay.
But that's gonna be the extent of what we talk about tonight. And I'll talk to Larry, our attorney, in the morning.
All right, very good.
Kinda get started.
Good, thank you.
Okay, they came in this afternoon, so that's why it's not on your agenda. The first thing, and usually we talk about it a little bit, see where we are on it. Let's look. And the proposed ordinance. Now, and I'm gonna mention some things to you. Noah came in just before the meeting and we talked about some changes and the things that Noah had written down. We took one or two words there and put over in here, we'd already done that. And some of the, they're pretty much the same. And so, the one, the one little change, you'll see it says, you start off, ammo for any person within the limits of the city, whether the same is loaded with powder or ball or shot or any kind of explosives, we added any kind to that. We did take out blank cartridges and we felt like that kinda freed up the military for their operation with cemetery. And that was part of what Noah had too. We feel like where it says air rifle or air gun, that takes care of BB guns, paintball, anything that's propelled by air. And that was something that Noah had. But we believe that what we have in the middle takes care of the use of bows and arrows and practices like they have at school on private land and the uses of BB guns and air rifles have the same privilege on your land. Figure out at the bottom, of course, the land's law, certain anybody legally have firearms, anyone except somebody like Josh, you wouldn't have had firearms. So, for the most part, it's the same ordinance, but a whole lot prettier than the old one.
Yeah.
I guess is about the best way to put that. We kicked it around and we think we've got decent ordinance. Now, is there gonna be hunting within the city of Mesopotamia? No, it's prohibited. Would there ever be a controlled hunt in the city? Possibly. But we, that would always be done through and with Mark Henry and the conservation. We're not gonna go out there and have a controlled hunt on our own unless you're after somebody. So, we don't feel the need an ordinance for that since we can do, we can do that if we want to. So... What do you think?
We've addressed the issue and I think Keith had brought that up on private property, you know, and I like that part. That was a part of his main statement.
It does allow us to, you know, target practice with our bow and shoot a BB gun, a pellet gun and, I guess, paintball gun on your own private property. As long as you can do it in such a manner as not to endanger the life limit property of others, which is...
And if you do, you're responsible.
You're responsible, exactly.
Would you share that? At this point, we can go ahead and read the...
Frustrating.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think.
Ordinance 1045, an ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri, repealing ordinance number 464, Chapter 62, Section 177, replacing it with a new Chapter 62, Section 177, discharge of weapons.
Need a motion on the first reading.
I'll make that motion on the first reading.
Okay. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We wanna do a second reading here? Yes. Okay. Okay. Ordinance number 1045, an ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri, repealing ordinance number 464, Chapter 62, Section 177, replacing it with a new Chapter 62, Section 177, discharge of weapons.
We need a motion on the second reading of the ordinance.
Some of it.
Second. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
I would like to just make a comment. We've, just gotta do one record. I think this is the third time we've had this ordinance in front of us. I would just really like to have anything that we would be voting on available to me on Friday evening before our Tuesday meeting. I can't speak for the other, other ordinance. But I would request that I have my complete packet on Friday evening rather than just look at anything that we would be voting on.
Okay.
I would agree.
Moving forward.
I apologize for when it's Friday. I had so many things happen and it's not been our routine to do that and we just didn't get it done last Friday. So, you was, that was my fault. You just have to... Bid opening on electric buildings. We had, we had two people bid. Instead of each one bidding on wood building and a steel building, one bid on wood and one bid on steel. So, the steel building was not much higher than the wood building.
Pull it out, Ben, I want that again.
The wood building, Bloodhound, was 82,000. JV Construction on the metal building, 83966. Now, one of the problems that we had in the very beginning is both these guys had built lots of wood buildings, metal frame, and they both insisted that the requirements, the specs on the wood building far, far exceeded anything that was required. They built lots of buildings of Christian in Green County and never seen those kinda restrictions. So, both of them agreed that there were at least $10,000 worth of extra things added that weren't required for the type of building we wanted. So, we backed up a little bit. We talked to, I did talk to the architect and had him talk to both of the people who bid. And he's going to redo the specs on wood building, take out some of the things that really weren't required. I'll let you tell them what those were since I...
Just a, just a quick summary, kinda give you an idea of what he had started with originally. It was like, we were, we were expecting like a polearm type structure, you know, like a red arm or, on that order. But what he had figured is like stud walls 16 inches, boxed, agro, agro trusses on top with decking on it and then metal screwed to that, it was just like building a house. And anyway, what, what we decided or went back to is like we originally, and it's still gonna be over-construcutive because typically you put your framing, like roof framing on seven and a half foot center with the agro trusses. Where David is gonna draw it out, David Frohling is on four foot with the purlings on top and a metal screw to it like we originally. It got a little bit carried away on the, it was just over, over-construcutive. We could have, so David's right, David, Mayor David, one of them is right. We can, we can knock, I'm gonna say at least 10,000, maybe more off of it by going with the framing like I actually thought, we thought we were getting in the first place.
So, that's a significant difference. And I talked to David Frohling, the architect, today. One of the things that, if we do that, we cannot put foam insulation on the metal because that manufacturer of the metal will not continue to warranty the metal.
Really?
Yep, that's what they said. So, I just told him, I said, "Well, you know, that's why we hired David." So, I said, "If that's what you say, that's what we'll do." So, he's, he's gonna contact the two bidders, he'll redo the specs a little bit and I expect next week we'll have a different arrangement. And we felt, and I called, I've talked to both of the people who bid and they both were in agreement about rebidding it. They were both happy to do that. So, I felt bad about it. We wasted a little bit of time, but there's so much difference in the cost. I don't think we had any choice but to back up and redo that. So...
It's, it's not like it's asking a whole lot from the bidders because like on the metal, it's gonna be the same amount of metal. So, just a little bit of difference in framing and everything else about the road, you know, it'll be exactly the same. So, it's not like we're asking them to do a lot of...
They're gonna have to dig up from scratch.
Yeah, yeah. So, most of it will stay the same, whether it's just the framing part of it.
Okay, that's where we are on that. So, we're waiting, wait on David Frohling and then Gasville to come up with the new Peggy, I'm, I'm gonna let you talk to them about the sewer water rate. You dealt with it, of course, you and I, and we've talked, Peggy and I, I'll just tell you, we had a company way back when I was on council do a study. We were way behind on our sewer and water rates. And when you get ready to get a loan and you're behind and your rates won't pay the bonds off, you can't get a loan. They said, "You're way behind, one of these days you're gonna need, you're gonna need to get a loan, you're not gonna be able to." So, he set on five, a five-year program for us and we thought it was too high and we cut it back, but we've, we've had automatic increases for five years, it's gonna be up in June. That's where we are with it.
The study that we had done several years ago was by a gentleman by the name Paul Ryle. He was a former DNR employee and he worked specifically with the SRF loans, which is what we have a lot of our bonds through. And he provided a scale that went out to 2019, so we're at the end of that scale. We didn't implement all of his suggestions, but we did put into place some increment increases. I've reached out to him to see if he was still doing those studies. He is. And he's, he's very thorough. I like the idea of him because of the SRF connection. I kinda wanted to pay some of those off and he's kinda suggesting that maybe we hang on to him for now because of the better interest rate on them and keeping their cash here and just making their payments. But that comes with his recommendations. So, I did reach out to him and ask him if he would be interested in doing a water analysis and a sewer analysis. And I, in my mind, I'm thinking water sewer, I'm thinking one analysis, but it's not. It's actually two. And they're very complex. And he, he said that if we do one full analysis, he gives us a discount on the second. Still very expensive. I think last time we spent between eight, 10,000 on the study. This time, of course, that's been like five or six years ago, so his price was 14,486. But that does give us the full water rate analysis, sewer analysis, and then he'll come and, and visit and explain things. So, that includes his visit as well. And I had to ask him if we got, could get this approved possibly, if we got him the information he needed, could he get it to us before July so that we could look at implementing it in? Because there may or may not be, you know, just 'cause you have an analysis done doesn't necessarily mean there'll be increases. He might actually look at it and say, "You're fine here, but you need to change the things here." You just never really know until he completes all of that. And he said he could, if we could get him the information, he could get it to us hopefully by the first part of June so that we could then look into future budgets. They also do, or he also does trash fees. So, if we would want to go ahead, if we're looking at a whole process of going through and analyzing all of our utility rates, this might be a good time to actually consider that because we would get the discounted rate on the, the trash as well, which would be 6,082 dollars. I have reached out to our electrical engineers. They did a rate analysis for us just, you know, a few years back. So, I'm just asking them to look over it, not necessarily go in and do a full loan analysis. Could you just look and see, are we staying on track or do you have any recommendations? I don't have any prices on that yet, so they're just kinda, I was kinda hoping maybe we could just work that into a, you know, talk to me for a couple hours on the phone and not cost us too much, so. But that's what it is on the water sewer is 14,486. If we also included a trash study on there as well, it'd be an additional 6,082 dollars.
So, the 14,000, if it included the analysis on water...
Yeah, right, water sewer. Yeah, that would be both of them. And that's not too out of line with what, what we did several years ago as far as rate increases.
From my memory, the, the analysis we had five years ago, best I recall, we had like a 30% loss that...
Yeah.
And that's, that 30% loss is water that we, we don't know where it's going.
Right.
Would this analysis explain? I mean, it would obviously give us our water loss.
Right. That would be part of, we'd have to show them, you know, what are we billing versus what are we pumping and all of that.
So, that would give us a comparison to our analysis five years ago.
Should, yes. Especially by using the same firm. They've got a little bit of a different program now and he does have some tools that I like. He said he would give me access to spreadsheets for us to do like a capital improvements are, for our supervisors to come in and list all of their equipment, age and all of that so that we can start looking at having like a five-year program, which equipment needs to be replaced so that we could look at actually putting it into our budgets. I like that idea. I'm not, I know we need to do it, I hadn't really figured out a spreadsheet on how to do that. So, he said he had some tools that we could utilize.
So, maybe with this analysis and, and that 30% loss, 30% loss sounds like a lot to me.
It is.
If we still had a 30% loss, then maybe he could give us some recommendations on how to alleviate that 30% loss because that would go a long way toward, I mean, if we could become more efficient, then that may be all we have to do instead of increased bills is become more efficient.
I'll just have to talk to him about that. I mean, he might be able to have a 30% loss, but I don't know if he can necessarily come in and identify where. You know what I'm saying?
You've got to hire somebody, you wouldn't, at the time, run cameras in.
Yeah, I was at a water conference a few years ago and there were some other cities and in fact, Casville was one of those cities. And they put the electronic meters in.
Yes.
And that, they cut third of the water loss from 30% to down to about 12%.
Well, one of the problems too about determining what your water loss is, we've got so many places where we can lose water and it may or may not have been recorded.
I think bookkeeping would help answer a lot of those questions, but it might come one percent from the electronic meters.
And when we got the 30% loss, which was way out of line compared to what we'd had before, we weren't real sure of what, some of it wasn't the bookkeeping, you know. But anyway, there certainly never was 30% loss.
Yeah, I'm thinking this analysis may be really well spent. We can get the analysis and we still have a 30% loss, then we need to look at...
Well, a rate, a rate analysis is something you should probably do every five to seven years. It should look at cities around us that are receiving audits. That's one of the audit recommendations that they're, they're coming up with if cities are being criticized for not looking at that. Are you charging enough? Are you charging too much? You know? And that way you've got somebody with professional eyes coming in and looking at it.
Well, I'd like to have a motion on that. I think with that amount of money, we need to...
And are you looking at this water or sewer or do you want to consider a trash? That's, I'm just throwing that out there because he mentioned it.
You think that's necessary on the trash?
Trash is in the black. We've done well on that, but it's always, it's always up to keep in the back of your mind.
My suggestion is that we hold off on the trash for the time being, but it's, it's doing, San Diego's, that's a good job. Not only are we in the black, but it's a really well-run department.
I think we're one of the very few trash utilities in the state that's in the black.
Yeah.
Because it's well-run.
Yeah. Good. Hear a motion for the sewer water study?
Is that what you're recommending?
Yeah, we're talking about it. We've got the money in that, in that fund, everybody for it.
I would recommend also that we move forward with getting the analysis.
And I think, I, I agree. I would second that because it'll maybe give us some information that we did, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, all.
I'll just mention Municho again. We did vote to go ahead to Municho. They're kinda holding up and we've got some ordinances like the one we did tonight that needs to be turned in and maybe some more if we make changes in municipal court that need to go in before they get started, at which time we'll pay half of that fee and then the other half when it's completed. So, that's where we are with Municho. It's just kinda on hold for the time being. Now, for those of you that use computers, you know you can pull a Municho up on, on the computer, so. And if you don't know how, ask, don't ask me. We've had some people at different times since I've been on the council and just recently make comments in regard to jake breaks on the trucks. And most, but it's not a problem unless you live along where Sanders Rock is and through there when they come down to the stoplight, or if you live anywhere close to the four-way stop south. And that's real flat down there and they really rack 'em off. And the first complaint we ever had was from Edmund, Edmund Ale, I remember. He just jumped up and down. And it is true, the jake brake is a safety thing on the truck and it should be, you know, they may have a need to use it from time to time. That's not a place where ordinarily we'd need a jake brake before we stop. So, there are some towns close to us and Rogers Hills is one of them, and is a noise ordinance. And we have pulled it, I called them and they sent it, they sent it to us. And we're just kinda looking at it, seeing and thinking about it. So, just let you know that that's on, it's on my desk and we're trying to see if that's something reasonable that we might be able to do and enforce. So...
But we, we addressed that once before years ago and we worded it with a jake brake, which was a mistake.
You had to adjust it.
Yeah, and it needed, it needs to be a noise ordinance to mount.
And that's what we do, that's what you see at Rogers Hills, noise ordinance in form. So, anyway, we'll see. We don't wanna be, we want, we want it to be a decent ordinance, so we'll, we'll look at it. The other thing is, and it, it came up with our election, the requirements for filing for office in a fourth-class city are that you be 25 years old and have a year's residence, residency, and that's it. You do not have to be a registered voter to file for office. However, you have to be a registered voter to vote for the person who was not a registered voter to file for office. Though it seemed kinda strange to me and I could hardly believe that, but we called the Secretary of State's office and sure enough, fourth-class counties do not require the candidates for office be a registered voter. So, if we're able... So, if we're able, and I believe we are since we could strengthen the ordinance, I'd like to see us and take time, look at it and see about requiring maybe a year's residency and also be a registered voter for a year, or certainly for minimum six months prior to election. I think whoever's in office needs to be a registered voter. And not that we have anybody that isn't, but we could, and if you don't mind, we'll just kind of put that with a noise ordinance and kick it around and see if we want to come up with it. We can be more stringent than state law, but not less stringent. Some time ago, we had a committee on the, down on the square, ACAL, come to me and wonder if we could have what's called wayfinding signs. I don't remember if we've talked about wayfinding signs. For example, let's say you come in from Mansfield, there'd be a sign that says, downtown district to the left, city offices to the left, or city hall, you know, and with arrows. And then you get down to that Pizza Hut in through there, and maybe another arrow that said Ava R1 School, or, you know, whatever we decided to do. So, we started looking at signs and types of signs, and... And we had to, what we came up with was, we thought we'd like to have six signs, and one coming in from 14 by Wal-Mart, one coming down from Mansfield, one coming in from Gainesville, one coming from Bradleyville at those four intersections. And then another one there at Pizza Hut, that sort of roundabout we've got. And you turn, maybe went to the cemetery, it's on the cemetery. And we've had requests for that, a sign showing where the cemetery is. And one is if you came in to the square and you went around the square and you're looking at Chris Swadish's office, and there were a sign there that said, community center straight ahead, art guild, and a museum. So those would be the six. And by the way, we also learned that left, left turn and straight ahead arrows are on the left, right turn arrows on the right, in case you didn't know that.
These would have to be put up by the state.
Well, we may have to put them up, but they're going to tell them, we can't...
They'll at least tell them.
Yeah, they're going to place them. And I'm going to show you a picture of what we did, is we went out and took a picture. That's just, just gives you an idea. You see the logo at the top? That's the, that's a picture of the sign out at the corner. And here, it doesn't have it on here, but it says established, whatever the date is there, 18 something. And I also got permission, I had the Chamber of Commerce just kind of write us a little letter giving us permission because they really bought the sign. I know we sponsor them, but just in courtesy, we did get permission to use the logo of the sign. That's kind of what they look like. Now, we talked about four by sixes. No.
Two, five, four.
Two by four. Three by six, three by fours, three by fours. Yeah. And then we talked about some of them being two by threes. But anyway, we had to take all of this and put it on a map and mark where we, one of these signs, which we did. And there's an idea of what I sent it to people, an idea of. And we sent him a map and marked sign three, five, six, one, two on the map, and emailed that to Michael Wake over at Wal-Springs. And he has to turn around and send it to the state, the state has to approve the signs, has to come back. And then we're required, if we want to do that. Now, these signs, total amount, the cost for the signs themselves was less than $900. And so that's the cost. But we'll have to make a resol, they're going to require us to have a resolution. An ordinance, placing the signs. It's kind of funny, we've never had an ordinance to place a sign before, but this is a little bit different. They're allowing us to put signs in places where they didn't allow before. We asked to put cemetery directional sign in Pizza Hut, and Randall said, "No, you can't do that." But now this is a wayfinding sign, and that's a different category somewhere.
It's a different category.
So anyway, that's what we're looking at. So unless there is an objection to that, we'll work on an ordinance for that. We'll deal with that next time. And if you have questions, come in and look at it, or ask for them. And I don't know that we can put the signs where we want it, see, Randall. And Michael says, they wonder if, we thought a two by fours, two feet, a four-foot sign at Pizza Hut was big enough. And the one at Swadish's would be big enough because you're going real slow. And Michael says, "They don't really like one that's small. They want it to be the three by four." And the three by fours are the size of that panel. Anyway, that's where we are with it. You know, in the beginning, we were talking about each sign being 700 and something dollars, which is going to be kind of pricey. We found these signs in the catalog. So we'll continue on if it's okay with everybody. I was excited to see the final plans. They look great. That's from the Chamber of Commerce. Did you guys hand me back all that stuff?
Yep.
Takes care of the signs. And I talked to you about the airport, that's where we are at the airport. I'll know more after I talk to Larry. But in general terms, that's what the lease we're looking at on the hanger. I mean, Larry's, Larry and I both got a lot of work to do before we, he's, he asked and I recommended that we get our deal done before he buys the other hanger. You know, be sure he doesn't get left out in the cold. And he's talking, he's talking about sizable investment on his part. In general, what's the size of your addition going to be, Larry?
I'm looking to come out 38 feet so I can get assessment 172, which is the most popular plant on that side.
38 by what?
Well, I can only go deep so far. It could probably be, I think the concrete would fit 36 feet. Because I can't go the whole length of that hanger because of the fence on there.
That's at an angle.
The back would be at an angle, from the angle of fence.
And I'll ask you, why are you wanting to build a hanger? I mean, I know, but tell us.
Why do aircraft maintenance? I've been doing it for over 50 years. I'm new in the area, basically now, I've been in the body for five or six years, something like that. And that's what I do.
How did you?
My mom wanted me to get out of it.
How did you know the guy whose hanger you're buying?
Whose hanger?
Yeah, and how did you know him?
Oh, I maintained his aircraft up in the Chicago area, that's where he lives. And I lived up there myself. Now, there's an aircraft maintenance up there, and I maintain all of his airplanes. He had quite a few airplanes. There's one twin engine he has. I maintained it for about 41 years, the only mechanic on for 40 years.
Larry, thank you very much, and thanks for coming, and we'll get busy.
And we both have airplanes.
I'm a pilot myself. I have my own airplane. Sue's a pilot, she has her own airplane. And so, there we go.
Did we lift anything out?
I bet.
I want to give you this plaque.
You don't want to do a book? No, no. Okay. Ms. Peggy? I'm going to present you this challenge one on behalf of Lewis County Fire Chiefs Association for your efforts in helping them with securing grants and their funding.
Well, thank you very much.
Do you hear your phone ringing? Get back in. Wait, wait, don't smile yet. Okay, one, two.
That's why, sorry. That's for Wal-Mart, round two.
I wonder if she said.
Get the next picture to you. I shouldn't do it. I don't have to push that button. Start pushing now. I was out at, some of us was out at the Menagerie Church Saturday morning. And they had a gradway to play a reserve, and there was about 15 graduates. But anyway, they presented a plaque, and I accepted it on behalf of the city. And this was also from Mike, and I had to check and see what DC MOFCH. I called Scotty, and I said, "What's his name?" He said, "Douglas County, Missouri, Fire Fighter Chief Association." Because I didn't know what it meant, but anyway, I accepted this plaque and their appreciation and support and the dedication that we, so anyway, I accepted it on, I have the city. But it was, just an added bit of information on that. The chain was the, I'm going to call him the instructor, not the owner. And these guys had called, the firefighters, these fire chiefs had called him up and said, "This is what we would like to do." And he pretty much said, "There's no way possible you guys can do this." But they got in and they proved him wrong, and he was really proud of all of them. And I think, I'm pretty sure, there was 15 graduates.
Yes.
I wonder if he's the one who had come over and inspect houses for asbestos. Oh, I thought that guy was from Aurora, that's off the coast of Oaxaca. And he was a certified inspector. Anyway, he had nothing but praise for all of these graduates, what they had achieved in just a short period of time. And he didn't think they could do it, and he was pretty pleased that they proved him wrong. Suzanne, is that it? Okay, well, as a part of our business, we will go into closed session.
So when I'm closed, I'll say it's that and all.